I know. Yeah, because I told her I can take it off consent. I, because one more thing.
You guys ready? Ref and goalie.
Yeah, if you talk to her. So.
Good evening, everyone. I am Chuck Hendrickson, Mayor Protem, Moorhead City Council. The Moorhead City Council welcomes public input on issues listed on the agenda or of general community interest, time and council permitting. Speakers are limited to three minutes each. If you'd like to address the council during the meeting, please fill out a form provided by the city clerk, and we will call you up during citizens addressing the council. If comments were submitted to the clerk prior to the meeting via email or e-mail phone, those comments will be entered into the record. For more information on participation, please visit the council meeting page on the City of Moorhead website at cityofmoorhead.com. We, the Moorhead City Council collectively and with gratitude, acknowledge the sacred land the City of Moorhead is built upon. We acknowledge the people who have resided here for generations and recognize that the spirit of the Dakota, the Ojibwe, the Métis, and all indigenous communities permeates this land. Sorry. If I get a call to order and roll call.
Ryan Nelson.
Here.
Matt Gilbertson. Heather Niesemeyer.
Here.
Laura Karoon.
Here.
Deb White.
Here.
Steve Lindos.
Here.
Larry Selgebold.
Here.
Chuck Hendrickson.
Here.
Shelley Carlson.
If you are able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States. To the republic which stands. Nation, God, freedom.
Brings us to item three on the agenda. Agenda amendments, are there any agenda amendments tonight?
I have none this evening.
Okay. Brings us to item number four, Consent Agenda. We have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
So move, Niesemeyer.
Second, Lindos.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. And the and the Consent Agenda has passed. That moves us to number five, Recognizations and Presentations. And our first presentation is the donation to the Inclusive Playground from the Moorhead Kiwanis. John Satrim and Peter Larsen are here from the Moorhead Kiwanis Club to present the donation to the Inclusive Playground project. This is their fourth payment of five that they have committed to the project. Thank you very much to the Moorhead Kiwanis. Oh, you can go over there, I'll come over there.
Thank you. On behalf of the Moorhead Kiwanis, we are pleased to be able to make this fourth installment and look forward to the final installment next year. And even more so to what the Inclusive Playground will bring to the city. So thank you for this opportunity to do this for you.
Thank you very much. And the check was for $2,000, I should mention that. It's usually a big check, but we'll take this one too, so. That brings us to agenda item number four B, the Moorhead Recognition, and it's Sadio Osman, and I think Lisa has that.
Thank you, Councilmember Hendrickson, I'm going to make you get your steps in today.
Thank you, I need them.
We are honoring tonight with the Moorheart Award, Sadio Osman. And Sadio was nominated by her friend Lisa Arnold. And her, the contributions she makes to our community are in relation to helping new Americans at the Afro-American Development Association. She connects people hoping to learn new skillsets in order to create new personal opportunities. New Americans are able to utilize the Afro-American Development Association and its resources in order to find opportunities and feel at home in Moorhead. Sadio volunteers her time and skills to lift those hoping to learn English or understand childcare and childcare licensing. Those are really vital services in our community right now. Lisa Arnold wrote in her nomination, "I've witnessed firsthand how valuable Sadio's work is for our students." "Sadio is a first-generation Somali-American whose background allows her to connect deeply with students, many of whom are Somali, both culturally and linguistically. It took courage for Sadio to decide to volunteer with us, as she is not a native speaker of English herself, and most of the time immigrants do not feel they are qualified to teach English. Sadio is not only a solid English tutor, but she's extremely helpful in translating for our lowest-level students who can become lost or intimidated if they have to communicate completely in English. Sadio has taken the initiative to bring a training program to our students so that they can begin receiving childcare training once a month that will not only enhance their understanding of child development, but can also lead to licensure for at-home childcare. This new training will be a great boon for many of our students who are otherwise not employed or who are not happy with their current employment. In addition to her volunteer work, Sadio's character deserves recognition. Her strength and integrity are inspiring to me and everyone at AADA, and I hope she can be recognized with a Moorheart Award." Our Moorheart Nomination Committee was very inspired by Sadio's nomination and work. And I'd like to bring her forward, and Councilmember Hendrickson, if you'd present the award. And perhaps Lisa Arnold could come forward too and be part of the recognition.
Thank you all, and I really appreciate for everyone who came here to support and.
Thank you, Sadio. Great work. That brings us to number, item four C, the Proclamation for Bleeding Disorders Awareness Month. And I'll read the proclamation here. I, Shelley Carlson, Mayor of Moorhead, am proud to commemorate March 2023 as Bleeding Disorders Awareness Month in the City of Moorhead. And whereas this designation will formalize and expand upon the federal designation 30 years ago of March 1986 as Hemophilia Awareness Month. And in 2016, when the entirety of the Bleeding Disorders community came together encompass all bleeding disorders. And whereas these bleeding disorders, which share the inability to form a proper blood clot, are characterized by extended bleeding after injury, surgery, trauma, or menstruation, and can lead to significant morbidity and can be fatal if not treated effectively. And whereas this Awareness Month in Moorhead will generate greater awareness and understanding of not only hemophilia, but all inheritable bleeding disorders and rear bleeding disorders, which affect millions of individuals around the world. And whereas the bleeding disorders communities' relationships with policymakers have fostered numerous medical and policy advancements beneficial to all those affected by bleeding disorders and their loved ones. And whereas the Awareness Month will foster a greater sense of community and shared purpose among individuals with an inheritable bleeding disorder. And whereas this Awareness Month will evaluate awareness of and engagement in the inheritable bleeding disorders journey beyond our community to the general public, enabling the prevention of illness, unnecessary procedures, and disability. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that I, Shelley Carlson, do hereby proclaim the month of March 2023 as Bleeding Disorders Awareness Month. And I'm Chuck Hendrickson, I'm not Shelley, but. I'd like to present this proclamation to Carson Watten.
Thank you so much, Chuck, thank you all. On behalf of the Bleeding Disorders Alliance of North Dakota, the local nonprofit organization, I want to thank you for declaring March the Bleeding Disorders Awareness Month here in Moorhead. Inheritable blood and bleeding disorders can present a genetic mutation from a genetic mutation or a random mutation. In fact, if you've heard about hemophilia at all, it was likely during a science class discussing genetics and Queen Victoria of Great Britain, who inadvertently passed the gene on through noble houses throughout Europe in the game of marriages for alliances in the 1800s and 1900s. In the last 150 years, we have come a long way in understanding the treatment and understanding and treating conditions like hemophilia, von Willebrand's disease, sickle cell disease, rare platelet disorders, or factor deficiencies. However, they can be extraordinarily challenging to manage day-to-day, as well as quite expensive. This Bleeding Disorders Awareness Month is important to raise the profile of these chronic conditions faced by people in our very own community. In fact, I know members here in Moorhead who, instead of, like my daughters, since I have severe hemophilia, we know the genetics that they are going to be affected as carriers. But we know people. but we know people here in Moorhead who had to find out the hard way with emergency trips to the emergency department with traumatic bleeding episodes and later diagnoses, and we understand how difficult that could be. But raising awareness is important, so that these folks know that they are not alone, that valuable educational resources are out there, and that we are fighting for more affordable and accessible treatments. Our local conversation is just one small piece of a national conversation around these rare conditions that affect thousands of patients and families nationwide. For more information or to find out how you can support us, visit BDAND, the Bleeding Disorders Alliance of North Dakota, at BDAND.org, or the national organization at hemophilia.org.
Thank you, Carson. Much appreciated in there. Brings us to agenda number six A, and I realize we took consent agenda out of order, and I do apologize for that. Six A, approval of the minutes for the February 27, 2023 meeting minutes of a motion.
Lindas will move approval.
Second. We have Councilman Lindas and Seldvold, first and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. And the meeting minutes are passed. Which brings us to agenda item number seven, citizens addressing the council, and I do believe we have a request to speak from Jason Ness. Jason, if you could state your name and your address, please.
Jason Ness, 15-year North Moorhead resident, address 533 13th Avenue North. Thank you to the members of the council for giving me a few minutes. I'm here to address the new nightclub at 15th Avenue North and 11th Street. Currently, it is my understanding that the city is providing conditional use permits and is trying to work with the business to find workable solutions to some of their situations. I support all new businesses in the City of Moorhead, along with this one. However, in the last few weeks, there have been some concerns. There's been considerable noise complaints that have been filed, also parking complaints, and most recently this last week, gunshots at their facility. I know that Moorhead PD is still looking into that, but it happened. I've also heard other neighbors who have shared their concerns with me. A few of the notes that I just wanted to share are, in this neighborhood, there are a family with children that live less than 50 yards directly across the street from this facility. Lots of children in the area who walk to the neighborhood gas station the holiday to go buy their pop and candy. They do that pretty much year-round. Increased traffic with the greater possibility for impaired drivers in our neighborhood. I have a new driver, so that concerns me. This provides nothing positive for our neighborhood that I have seen yet. They are struggling to follow some of the policies and codes that are currently in place. I am concerned, not knowing what, you know, their plan is for summer, you know, do they expect to have outside summer concerts? They've struggled with the noise. I'm very concerned what that would look like. Creates a challenge and an unsafe environment for our emergency responders that also have to respond to these situations. I am asking the city to not allow additional variances or conditional permits to the city codes and to the ordinances. I do wish this business the best, and I do want them to succeed, but I feel if we are too lenient with the city's processes, it's only going to negatively affect our neighborhood. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. That brings us to agenda item number nine A, Public Hearing, Community Development, Block Grant 2023 Annual Action Plan. Can I get a motion to open the public hearing?
So move Nisa Meyer.
Lindas.
Run.
First and second, public hearing is open, and I do believe, Tanya?
Good evening, councilmembers. I'm Tanya Kunze, Community Development Program Administrator, and I'm here to introduce the 2023 Annual Action Plan draft and the proposed changes to the Citizen Participation Plan. There's no action required this evening. This is a public hearing, and final consideration and action will be at the March 27 City Council Meeting in two weeks. The draft action plan is currently in a 30-day public comment period, which will end on March 25, and no comments have been received on these items so far. The draft annual action plan for 2023 has a total of $513,041 anticipated resources available. The 2023 CDBG allocation was just released, and the City of Moorhead will be receiving $313,598 for the year 2023. The plan estimates that there'll be $150,000 in program income, and there was a total of $49,443 unobligated funds at 2022 year-end. CDBG regulates the percentage, regulations of the percentage of funds that can be utilized for program administration and public services. The expenditure category caps for both are reflected in the proposed plan, with a 20% cap for program admin and 15% cap for public services. The majority of the funds are allocated to the home rehabilitation program, in which six homeowners benefited in 2022, with an estimate of six more for 2023. Currently, there is a lot of interest in this program, with 22 homeowners are currently on a waitlist to be on the program. This popular program is balanced with a number of other activities that also provide great community benefit. And there's also the comment period for the proposed amendment to our Citizen Participation The plan is going to be removing expired language that is currently in there from the COVID-19 regulations, and it's going to specify a higher budget change threshold that would necessitate a substantial consolidated plan amendment. Currently, the Citizen Participation Plan states if an activity changes by the greater of $5,000 or 25%, a substantial amendment would be needed, which is requiring a 30-day public comment period, publication, and city council action. The proposed Citizen Participation Plan would increase the threshold to the greater of $20,000 or 25% of activity budget. HUD suggested this change to streamline grant administration in line with other Minnesota cities of similar size and CDBG grant awards. Comments on the 2023 draft plan and proposed amendment to the Citizen Participation Plan will be accepted through March 25, 2023. Comments can be made by phone, email, or submitting comments through the city's website. This information has been published in the FM Extra and is available on the website cityofmoorhead.com. Search Community Development Block Grant. Any questions or comments?
Is anyone here in the audience would like to speak on the public hearing? Is there anyone here in the audience that would like to speak on the public hearing? If not, I'm looking for a motion to close the public hearing.
So move Nisa Meyer.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Any questions from the council? Councilmember White?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Actually, I just wanted to update on two items, because there's so many great things that are in there. One is the Bennett Park, we're removing vacant homes, and I just wanted to know if we know anything about what will happen to the lots afterwards. And then the second question I was wondering about is our, you know, we started this snow removal assistance program, and I just wondered if you had any information on how well that's being utilized, or, you know, any information of fraud?
Okay, I can first comment on the snow removal program. It's very successful. We have over, we have 14 current residents in the City of Moorhead that are benefiting from the program, and with all these last snow events, we've been very busy, and it's been, I've actually looked at having to allocate some more funds to the program since it's been highly needed, the amount of snowfall we've received, so. And I actually have a waiting list that started, so, yeah, it's very much being utilized, so. And for the Bennett Park, the removal of the six abandoned homes is to create with the infrastructure plan that they have to increase the homes available in the park. So, it's going to revitalize along with the funds that they received through the grant through Minnesota, I don't recall offhand what grant they received, but for infrastructure, so.
Great to hear. For those who don't know, the snow removal, it's for elderly and folks with disabilities on restricted incomes to help them with some of their snow removal, and I'm glad to hear it's being used a lot.
Yes.
We certainly need it.
We've got a lot of snow out there.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lindas.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. This is just synergistic with what Councilmember White was asking. There's a lot of programs like the snow removal, but also the accessibility one, which are really small items, and I'm also looking at the youth programs in Romke Park and also down by Queens Park and stuff, yet they probably have huge impacts. And one of the questions always is, you know, accessibility, it seems like that probably could get eaten up really fast. Are there processes by which we can, you know, somehow increase those funds?
The funds that you're referring to are the public service funds, in which they do have that 15% cap of what we can allocate, and so we allocate the 15% and go from the activities that are needed in the community to help, like you said, with the children and the different activities that we provide, so. Yeah, no, it would be nice if we could utilize more than 15% for public service, but that is the cap from HUD.
Any other questions? No, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm a little off my game tonight, apologize, but I'm going to go back to agenda item number seven. Are there any citizens in attendance who would like to address the city council about an item that is not on tonight's agenda? And I realize I skipped that, so I apologize.
No, you didn't.
Did I do that one?
Uh huh.
Okay. Like I said, I'm off my game, because world-class state championships, I've been just. That brings us to nine B, Public Hearing to Authorize Application to the Federal Transit Administration for 2023 Capital Assistance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So move Nisa Meyer.
Lindas will second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Ms. Manby, go ahead.
Thank you so much, Mayor and City Council. So tonight's public hearing is regarding an application to the Federal Transit Administration for 2023 capital assistance, and we have several grant funds available for these capital assistance projects. The State of Minnesota has passed through $480,000 in 5339 bus and bus facility funds. We also have some carbon reduction program funds, and then our normal appropriation of federal 5307 funds. So, we've combined the funding sources to put enough money in for these projects. We originally put these into a grant application in 2021 to the State of Minnesota. Some of those projects have increased in cost by the time that they've been selected, which is, we'll fund those additional funds with our 5307 money that we get appropriated. Tonight's public hearing was published in the FM Extra and on our City of Moorhead website and the Met Bus website, and through rider alerts and posters and information up at the Ground Transportation Center. The projects that we'll be funding are in the 2023 Mass Transit Budget, and they consist of shelters, up to four shelters, and we have selected locations for those projects. Some of our shelters are 1980, 1982 shelters, and so they're over 40 years old, and it's time to replace them with some solar lighting shelters that are new and will help passengers have a nice visit in that shelter when they're waiting for a bus, so. The other items that we are going to be purchasing are paratransit replacement bus. One of our 2018 buses has reached its maximum life of five years, and by the time we get the new bus delivered, it's going to be almost three years out for delivery now with the buses, the way the supplies and things are going right now, so it'll be long past its life when we get that replacement bus, so we're happy to get that order in. We also have some technology. We have the auto voice, the auto voice system inside our buses, and the auto vehicle location system, which is the GPS system that has our live tracking and our Google directions and things that are, that's over 12 years old, and so we'll be updating that project along with Fargo. It'll be a joint project to update that. And we also have a paratransit software and scheduling system that's over 10 years old that we'll be replacing for paratransit, so people can schedule their rides, and the newer systems are so nice, because they actually will text you and remind you of your appointments and that the buses are coming, and it'll just make it much easier for people to make those appointments and remind them of them. We also have improvements to our Metro Transit Garage. The Metro Transit Garage is now, it was occupied in 2007, so it's getting to be 16 years old, and so there's some various things that we need to do to that garage, including replacing some of our heaters and air conditioners and our bus wash, and separating some offices to make more offices for our contracted staff. So we have quite a bit of improvements there, and that, again, is a joint project with Fargo. Moorhead owns one-third of that building, and so we pay one-third of those costs to improve that building. The other items we have are replacing our tool cat. Our tool cat is starting to rust through, and so we'll be replacing that with a new utility vehicle jointly with Fargo as well. And then the last project is our Dilworth Walmart hub construction. So, we had brought to you the engineering design for the Dilworth hub, and this is the construction part of that project. And the construction costs have gone up quite a bit since we put that project in a grant public hearing process, so we have the carbon reduction program funds. We've got an additional $84,000 in funds that'll add to that project, so that we can help with those additional costs. So all of these projects add up to $1.15 million, and the local share match is $226,000. The Dilworth Walmart hub local match will be paid by the City of Dilworth, and the rest of the funds are $159,408. We get a set aside of capital improvement funds through their finance department of $150,000 annually, so we'll be using those funds, as well as ones we've put aside in other years, to fund the local share match for those grant funds. Be happy to answer any questions.
Is there anywhere, or, excuse me, anyone here in the audience that would like to speak on this public hearing? Is there anyone here in the audience that would like to speak on this public hearing? If not, I'm looking for a motion to close the public hearing.
Second, Nisa Meyer.
A motion and a second. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. And the public hearing is closed. That brings us to the resolution to authorize the filing of an application to the Federal Transit Administration for 2023 capital assistance. I'm looking for.
Lindas moves approval.
Second, Nisa Meyer.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. And that passes. Thank you, Lori Manby.
Thank you so much.
Which brings us to agenda item number 11E, Resolution to Approve Conditional Use Permit to Operate Nightclub Adjacent to a Residential Use at 1511th Street North. It's Robin Houston.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, Hendrickson, and councilmembers. The request is for a conditional use permit to operate a nightclub at 1511th Street North, which is directly adjacent to residential uses, both to the east and to the south. The applicant signed a lease and were issued a 2AM liquor license prior to zoning, building, fire, and environmental health reviews could be completed and approved. This CUP and one fire marshal item is still pending, and it's just the panic hardware. The fire marshal was just there today, so they're still working out panic hardware on the fire escape doors. During the first two weekends of operation, there were three noise complaints, complaints about nightclub patrons parking at the Holiday Station across the street, and one accident with a suspected DWI in the parking lot. There were no calls for service the third, fourth, and fifth weekends of operation, but this past weekend, MPD is investigating a shooting in the vicinity of the nightclub. Three public comments have been received concerning noise, theft, and safety issues in this location. The most recent, did you get a copy of the most recent public comment, so I don't have to read it? They had some concerns about the safety of the use in this location. The Planning Commission recommended approval with the conditions noted in your packet to address the general welfare. to address the general welfare, health, and safety of the neighborhood. I'd be happy to answer any zoning questions. I will defer all legal and the police questions to the city attorney, and one of the applicants is here if you would like to address them as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Robin. Any questions? Councilmember White.
Thank you. Robin, actually, could you just, I know in the packet it includes a pretty detailed list of some of the different things that were recommended, that, you know, things like putting in a fence, some things to really address some of the concerns that have been raised. Can you just walk us through some of those?
Sure. So we did some investigation in the previous use because there hasn't been a bar in this location for some time, but any of the previous iterations did not have a 2:00 AM liquor license, so we did have a concern with that in that location just because of the proximity of the neighborhood. So the first condition of approval was limiting the hours to 1:00 AM on Fridays and Saturdays, 12:00 AM Sunday through Thursday. We also put in, you know, maximum capacity for fire issues is 300. Doesn't mean that there'll be 300 there. We don't require parking for 300. The parking's based on the square footage of the building, which they will have to provide a parking plan for the required 46 spaces. That's condition six. We also put some condition in about addressing the noise because I think that's one of the biggest issues for the neighborhood is so no, you know, no open doors or windows to minimize noise. And then also, you can't hear the music at any property line for this club. I think in the past, the bar has been more of a bar tavern. I think they've had some musical, music venues there in the past, but again, you know, it hasn't operated for five years, so we didn't really have a lot of history on police calls, you know, previous police calls. We also put in a condition about providing proper supervision, so they do have security for the nightclub. And, you know, I just mentioned to them that they want to make sure they escort their customers off sites because loitering can be an issue with the neighborhood as well because noise, noise issues. We would not permit any outdoor seating, so I know the gentleman that spoke earlier was concerned about outdoor music, and that would not be permitted under this permit. We are recommending a solid seven-foot fence. We do require screening between residential, commercial for new development, so we thought that might, you know, provide some additional separation between the incompatible uses. Have to address the fire marshal items. And then comments, or excuse me, conditions 12 through 19. These are just to reiterate some of the legal requirements of the conditional use permit. You know, they have to, and it also explains in detail how the city council would revoke the permit if it could not meet the condition. I'd be happy to talk about anything specifically. The conditions, the first 11 conditions were developed for the Planning Commission to directly address possible neighborhood concerns. The 12 through 19 are more of the logistics and legalese for our conditional use permits.
That's really helpful. And I think the only thing I'll ask is beyond that is just so if they were to, so you've worked out things to try to address concerns of the neighborhood, and then if they were to violate those, what would happen?
So, and I'll defer to John, but if the council deems that they're not meeting the conditions of approval, so I will just say, one of the first conditions that has a date is the parking plan. If they do not provide that, they're not meeting the condition of approval, I can bring that up and talk to the city attorney. The council would have to have a public hearing to revoke the permit, and that requires notice to the applicant, and then you would have a public hearing, take comments, vote whether or not. And I think at that time also, if there was, you know, you wanted to still maintain the permit, you could put additional conditions, but John might explain that a little more.
Yeah, if you look at condition number 15, which is pretty standardized in our conditional use permits, just a clarification, it is not a public hearing, it's an administrative hearing. And so if there was a violation of the conditional use permit, you would provide notice to the applicant that they're in violation, and they have 10 days to correct. If they do not correct that condition, then it's a hearing before the city council, and the city council has the right to revoke that. I would note that pursuant to the condition, that all of the legal costs the city would incur are to be paid by the applicant. So it has some teeth for enforcement by the city council if you go forward with it. But it's a pretty streamlined process where you can give notice and revoke it.
One thing I'm concerned about too is when did the nightclub open?
They opened the weekend of February 3rd. They've been open, this past weekend was the sixth week.
And we've already had that many violations for just a little over a month. To me, that's concerning, especially with the safety of the neighborhood. Councilmember Salzfeld.
Let me figure this out is that on opening weekend, there was noise complaints. And then what I read in the paper after that, there was none. Has there been noise complaints since that opening weekend?
First two weekends, there were noise complaints.
The first two weekends. So they've been opening up at six, and then they've been good?
Until this last week.
Yeah, the last week. The other thing is, is the parking across the street, has there been any more problems with that?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Lindas.
Thank you. City Planner Houston, were at the Planning Commission meeting, was some of the citizens and residents' concerns brought up at that time? Did they have a chance to see the conditions? And, you know, kind of what was the interplay between those conditions and people? Or is this the first time they've been seeing those conditions?
Sure. So the first public comment I got was before the Planning Commission packet went out, but I did speak to him about some of the ones that we had been mulling over about, you know, addressing the noise. The second comment was from a resident who was at the Planning Commission meeting, so he did hear the discussion and also saw the actual, the first 11 conditions. And then the other comment came in just today.
You stated there was reports of gunshots, was that in the parking lot?
I will defer to Mr. Shockley. It wasn't in the parking lot, it was in the facility, I believe.
That's my understanding also. Actually at the facility, it was nearby.
Nearby, okay. Councilmember Karun.
Thank you. You know, I'm not as concerned about noise complaints. It's not something that can be, you know, remedied pretty easily. And if we didn't have those only the first two weekends, sounds like that was probably taken care of, but, you know, I have heard from neighbors around that are really concerned about a shooting happening there and violence. And I don't know if the Planning Commission would have approved as easily if that would have happened before they met last week. So that's something that I would like more information about that, and also having an accident already potentially relating to a DUI. That building is really close to those residents in that neighborhood, so I think we need to really take those concerns pretty seriously.
Councilmember Nisa Meyer.
Would the owner or applicant be able to speak to any movement or measures that they are taking in their business establishment to address maybe some of the concerns? I know they've got time, but perhaps they would be able to speak to some maybe safety measures, or they've heard concerns and are working on it. They've got time in the conditional permit, but perhaps they would be able to speak to some concerns. I'm hearing Councilmember Karun's note.
Would we need the name and address? State your name and your address, please.
Kalua Smith, I'm the owner of the class of those launch. I live in Moorhead, 3110, 6th Street South Moorhead.
Thank you, thank you, sir.
Oh, go ahead.
If you want to restate your questions.
Sure. I was curious after hearing Councilmember Karun's comments and concern about recent public safety concerns with an accident in the parking lot, parking concerns, gun incident in the area of the facility, if you are making any adjustments to the nightclub or the environment to sort of address any safety concerns or any concerns that you've heard during the Planning Commission for any of the concerns that you've heard?
Yes. Before we got started with the nightclub, when we went to the police department to do our background check, it was one of the safety concern we raised with the police department about some violence at nightclub. And the first night that we had a nurse complaint in our first week of open, we went to the police department, we told them that we'd like to work along with the police department to reduce or keep the community safe. And the response from the police department from Moorhead, they said that they don't have enough men for the next shift. We're just asking that the club runs from 11 to 1:30, and people start leaving around 1:30 to 1:45, we'll close at 2:00. So our concern was to police department, if we can get a police person at the facility at that close period, it will help to control or eliminate violence with the police person. But the police department came back to us, they said that they cannot guarantee that to us, they cannot promise that because they only have four men on the next shift. And that's something we've been looking into to keep the community safe. But unfortunately, the department says they cannot guarantee that if you go to Minneapolis or other nightclub, that 1:30, you see the police car there, it had to keep the place safe from some bad, other people who want to come with some bad intent. But then the Moorhead Department of Police saying that it's a good idea, but they cannot promise or they will send somebody there at 1:30 at night because they only have four police officers on the entire Moorhead community at night. So that's things that we've been working on. And then the issue of the nurse complaint, it was just the first week before we got started with that building, we had things that we put into place about the nurse because we realized that it had neighbors living back there, so we tried to do some soundproof in the building before we even opened. And then when we opened, we had a nurse complaint, we tried to notice that most of the nurse came from the exit door, and we tried to work around that. But then after that, there was no complaint from the community for our rest of our opening days, 30 days, unfortunately, situation happened. It was not in the facility, not in the nightclub, as the media reported it, it was other the facility on the street. And the police responded, and then the building is called with 10 different cameras. I suspect they were working with the police department to produce all the footage with them. So we have been working with them, we have this concern, but they said that they cannot do anything because of the manpower, unnecessary, not sufficient manpower to guarantee us that they will have. We just need a person there for 10 minutes because from 11 to 12, one, they noticed seven, maybe when people leaving, and our security can go to individual cars and tell them, oh, don't make music loud, with the police person with a siren on, people definitely going to behave and be in accordance.
Councilmember Gilbertson.
Thanks, Mayor Protem. What time do you guys open in the evening? Because I live north of you, and I've been there since 98, and it's been a nightclub multiple times in its history. What time do you guys open in the evening?
We open the club at 10 o'clock, and we open on the weekend, but now because the weather, and then if the weather gets better, we tend opening Wednesday to Saturday. But right now, we only open Saturday and Sunday. Open from 11 to 1:30, 1:45. At 2:00, everybody should be out of the building. So the meeting shut down at 1:30. And then as the security started to get people off, then our bartender do a mini cleaning up, then we also would leave sometime like 2:00, 2:15, but meeting shut down at 1:30 in the facility.
The conditional use permit would be 1:00 though. The conditional use permit would be, you know, I don't know if it closes at 1:00 or liquor sales are done at 1:00, Robin? Everybody has to be out by 1:00.
Everybody should be out by 1:00?
If we pass the conditional use permit, you'd have to be out, everybody would have to be out by 1:00, not 2:00.
And that's something we see we can, but another thing we, as a business, we looking at, ups on, because we realized that it's not a good thing for our business. We just opened with all these complaints, so we're looking around and we met with the landlord, we're not the owner of the building. We leased the building for him, and then we have the conversation with him if he can meet up with the state rules and regulations, and then we go in a two-year lease with him. So we have no upside, no alternative to probably find a building that will be, you know, near who, and we'll probably move out. But it's something that we're looking into because we call the first time in the media. And second thing, some of this, the first time it happened, the council met, we are business, you know, we were not invited to the meeting, we got most of the news from the press, valid news, and I was shocked and some of the concern, once you came in at the first time, you raised the issue, and the snow were like all the place, like the parking issue they talked about. Right now, we cannot do the zoning thing and stuff like that because the building, occupant of the building is 300 people. And then I saw in the paper, they asked for 46 cars. The occupant, they approved 300 people to go into the building. So if we accepting 300 occupant, we should be expecting more than 46 cars. So I don't know how the zoning and the building, how they're going to work that out because there's been some of the concern about the parking and stuff like that. But right now, the parking is like because the snow, we're trying to clean the snow, but we cannot really get everything clear up. And then I saw in the paper, we get up to May, March, and maybe before April, the snow will wear away, then we can work with the zoning to see how we can do the demarcation of the 46 car they're talking about. Then the other issue they raised about the fence, this property is not for us, we just leasing it, so that's something we have to work along with the landlord to see whether he can afford to do that. If he can, we find an alternative.
Councilmember Lindas, I think you had a question.
Yeah. So I appreciate that you've been working with the Moorhead Police Department, and, you know, any kind of situation is great when you can have a partnership. And I also appreciate that, you know, the Moorhead Police Department can't guarantee that they're going to have an officer. So then it really falls on your organization to be able to, or business to be able to provide adequate security. So, I mean, you already have some security, but can you potentially, you know, increase the security at certain times, especially at closing?
Yeah, we can do that, but the concern with the security is just to, within the premises, but most of the problem is that in the gas station, is that all of the premises where we're leasing from is not happening, sometimes the premises on the street. So our security cannot go on the street to put things under control. So normally, that's the problem. But within the premises, our security there to make sure that, like they go on Saturday, we have the security guy who was there outside, and he spoke with the police, when the police arrived, he told them that the issue that happened on... arrived, he told them that the incident happened on the 15th Street building, it was now within the premises of the club. And they've carried on an investigation, I don't know, but the issue did never happen within the club, it happened on the street, 15th Street, in the 15th Street side of the club, it never happened within the club. Yeah, we guarantee security within the premises, but as you mentioned about gas station, our security is not going to go to the nearby opposite gas station to ask somebody what they're doing at the gas station, that's the problem. But within the premises, our security, yes, we guarantee that.
So, I mean, I appreciate that the security has jurisdiction on your property, but they could, if they're properly trained, you know, cross the street and de-escalate issues if they saw something that was going on.
Yeah, that was, as I said at the beginning of the background check, where I went to the police department to do a background check before, I think my liquor license, I spoke with the agent, there was somebody concerned that I raised with him. And he said to me that things they're going to look into, but he cannot guarantee us getting, because we're not too far from the police department, just, I think, few miles, we're a minute away from the police department. So we were just asking that, okay, since we're close to you, we're willing to work with the police and the community, we want to keep the police person, we have to keep the community safe, we have to keep our business safe, it will have to keep us long in business. So we were proposing to them that this, we can get this done, and it will help the community, it will help the business. But they continue to insist that the man, or only just full staff, they cannot guarantee us for the entire Moorhead, they wouldn't have full staff. We don't need you there, that hour, we just need you there for 10 minutes, and our club closing, everybody leaves in harmony. But they said, you do measure this, you can do that. Way before I opened the club, I already discussed how it happened with the police department for the club opening. So they were saying that already, within safety measure in place for the community and the business.
Councilmember Nelson, you're next.
Thank you. Do you have, have you previously owned any bars or nightclubs or managed any bars, nightclubs?
Yeah, I do manage nightclub.
What's your experience with that?
I have a five-year experience in managing nightclub in the United States. Before joining my work in America, I was managing a classy toss lounge at the biggest state-run university in the Republic of Liberia, in the University of Liberia. So it's something that I've been into for the past, I have some couple of experience. And based on my experience, while I was talking to the police, because I know sometimes when people come to bar, for some reason, they try to misbehave. So when we get this thing started, it was our first thought, we worked along with the police department, and we were very safe that, okay, the police department is so close, also this will be very safe zone for business. But then, when we get open, we had the first complaint, we went to the police department, tried to talk to a couple of the agent to us, that, oh, you guys, we have an issue, that's fine, you guys can leave. And everybody come there in and there, the first time, the first two days they came, and we confronted there, and I went to this department, I went to the station, I still wanted to have the conversation, but they were saying to us that this is a situation they cannot guarantee us, the premises be there for 10 minutes and stuff. But we were willing to work with them to keep the community safe and keep the business safe.
Councilmember Wade.
Thank you. It's, this is a, it's a really difficult issue. You know, I can say, I remember when I read about your opening in the newspaper, and I don't remember all of the details, but it was pretty clear that you and your business partners have made significant investments and that, you know, you went into this, you were able to get a permit, and you, you know, you had the city's permission in that effect to do, to open and do the work that, well, I guess we'll see clarification, as I see Robin shaking her head. But you've made, you made significant investments in this. And we do really appreciate that because we, you know, want to support small businesses in Moorhead. But I also am very conscientious of the concerns of neighbors. As somebody who lives in a neighborhood adjoining more commercial area, there's always those, you know, issues of, you know, how do we help businesses thrive in Moorhead without, you know, doing things that are harmful for the folks in the neighborhoods around it? And I want to say, I really appreciate the efforts that the Planning Commission did in really trying to look at how do we mitigate many of those. And I, you know, I would be comfortable giving this a little more time to see because it sounds like you're trying to work to address these things. And we've certainly made some pretty stringent expectations of what you would need to do. And I, but I would also, and this is not, I don't know if this is anything that we can even work into what we have, but I would really suggest some conversations with the neighbors of, you know, it sounds like there are things that were in the, in our packet of what was in the conditional use that the neighbors weren't even aware of, things like that we, you wouldn't be allowed to do things outside. And so I think having those conversations with your neighbors and a little bit of community building, that just talking to them about the things they're concerned about and what you might be able to do, and maybe work together on those things, that might be really helpful. And so I would really like to see something like that happen so that maybe to help alleviate some of those things that you can work together on, do something that would really be helpful for your business so you can thrive, but also, again, not be harmful to the adjacent neighborhood.
Yeah, some of the concern to have been raised with the police, if the police come there, and then they say that, the first two nights they came, the first week we opened, they came, they said, oh, there's a noise complaint. And my concern to the police, well, if I'm a business owner, so if you have the noise complaint from the community or from the neighborhood, it would be a good thing to let me know who is the neighborhood who has the complaint. I'm willing to work, meet with the neighbor and see how we can, you know, navigate in the middle and see how we can talk about it and see how the both of us can meet. But they always keep the complainer away from us, we don't know who complaining. They have a couple of people live around there, so that's some of the issue we've been seeing, if they call you as a police, or noise complaint, you come to the business owner, I don't know if the law don't allow them to tell us who complained to them, so we can want to meet with them because we want to be friends with the community. So we want to know, if, either way, best way we can help, or let it tell, oh, what the noise coming from, then we know how to address the issue, you know, which part of the building, you know, because the building is this situation like this, people here and back, if the noise coming from the back, if they're coming from the side, or they're coming from the east, we don't know what the noise coming from. So if we want to work, it'll make it more easier for us to know that, okay, the noise is coming from the back of the building, so we know how to get it fixed. If the noise is coming from the north, the east, to get it fixed, but they always keep the information, they don't tell us who's complaining to them. That's why I told them, actually, if we have the right to know as a business owner, who is complaining to the police about the noise, so we're willing to work with them too. Oh, sorry.
When we get complaints from residents, those are confidential. So what I would suggest is, there is some time for the statutory deadline for approving this, I think you have until April 13th, you could table this item. And in the meantime, applicants, I would suggest what we do with, when we try to rezone properties, we suggest that they have a neighborhood meeting, they could just invite the neighbors, we have a mailing list already created, they can invite the neighbors to their location, and then they could address questions that the neighbors would have, if you wanted to go that route.
Councilmember Gilbertson.
Thanks, May Pro-Town. Before we venture down that road, how long is the conditional use permit for?
Runs with the property, so once it was approved, it would get filed by County Recorder's Office. And as long as the conditional conditions were being addressed, it runs with the property. So like, for example, if they chose to relocate, someone else could go into that same space, but they would still have to meet those conditions.
And they have to meet all those conditions if any of those conditions are not met by April or May 1st?
Sorry. Yeah, so the, all the conditions, no matter who's operating a bar or nightclub, would have to be met. And if they're not, then that's when the council would have a revocation hearing, or could have a revocation hearing.
Because what, tonight, John, we're just, we're just, if we want to rein in this business, passing this conditional use permit would be the appropriate step tonight, correct?
Yeah, that would give you, if you pass the conditional use permit, then you would have authority to revoke it if the conditions are not met.
And if we table it or don't do anything, they can stay open till 2:00 AM?
I'm, they have a license right now, they are not in conformance of zoning. At a later date, the city may take action on the license, since right now, they don't have zoning approval to operate the business. Until you approve it with a conditional use permit. I think the staff's goal was to get the zoning, if we could get the zoning fixed before we go down the path of revoking the liquor license, for lack of the ability to operate it in the location.
Table the item tonight, next weekend, they can, if you approve the permit tonight, their hours would be limited to the conditions in the conditional use permit.
Would we get, I'm sorry, are you, go ahead.
But then if we approve the conditional use permit and they relocate or don't pass the zoning, the conditional use permit stays with the building?
Yes, correct, it stays with the property.
So then down the road, anybody can move in there and do, then we have a lot less other than these conditions, right?
Yeah, if they meet the conditions, they can operate in that location.
I think Councilmember Nelson, do you have a?
I'll let the others go first, I might have been answered.
Councilmember Lindas.
Thank you. So there's two different types of permits, we have conditional and interim use permits. And so conditional permits run with a property in perpetuity, interim basically can sunset. And so one of the questions I would have addressing Councilmember Gilbertson's concerns would be, you know, what are, what's the latitude? I know the applicant applied for conditional, but can the council change it to an interim so it has a sunset date?
Not for this application, because you have a, you have a statutory deadline, you have to act on it by April 13th. I mean, if you act on this one, that could be brought up after this one was acted on. But interim permits are usually meant to be temporary, so you put conditions, you know, they're usually for a few months at a time, and we don't have, we don't have a lot of of those requests, as far as I know.
Councilmember Wade.
Thank you. So if I understand this correctly, if we, if we tabled it, then again, the conditions wouldn't take effect. But if we vote on the conditional use permit, they would take effect right away, but we wouldn't necessarily then require some kind of a community meeting. And would there be a way of working that in? Because honestly, I would rather have the conditions take effect to make sure that we're working on addressing some of the concerns already, but I'd also like to see that community engagement part so that, to help, you know, to really work at fleshing some of these concerns out.
You could add that to your conditions of approval, that that's a requirement of the permit.
Okay. Then I would, is it appropriate to add that in right now? Move to amend it?
Yeah, you could, when, if there's a motion to approve it, the person making the motion could add that condition to the...
In addition to the ones that we currently have, okay.
If you're making a motion, add timeframe for that meeting to occur.
Sure. And do you have a suggestion on the timeframe? Okay.
Well, 30 days from now is April 13th, I'd make a motion that they have 30 days to, I'll make a motion to approve the conditional use permit, a meeting within 30 days with the community.
Community meeting in 30 days, okay. So we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
He's fair, okay.
Yep.
So we have a motion and a second, and I think Councilmember Nelson, you have a question?
Sure, so if this, if we vote and this approves, Mr. Shockley, the, we'll be able to take action on the liquor license and the conditional use permit if there are violations, right? Why, we can take action against the liquor license today, can't we? Or what's, why can't we, why do we have to have the conditional use permit in place to take action?
Great question. You would not have to have the conditional use permit in place to take action on the liquor license. I don't know if there's been any recommendation that's come forward yet on taking action on the liquor license, because the shooting activity did not occur on the premises. Once the conditional use permit is in place, for example, if they did not have the community meeting within 30 days, you could take action to revoke the permit. And then I would recommend that at the same time, we would take action on the liquor license because they wouldn't have, they wouldn't be zoned for to operate a business like that.
Mike, my comment, if I can, then, so I've heard complaints from the north, the south, the east, and the west, around your establishment, from lots of citizens. So it's not just the one neighbor to the south or to the east, it's everyone surrounding. And the concerns aren't necessarily, they are part of the noise complaints and that kind of thing, but I think obviously, the big one is the shooting that is, we don't have all the information, right? And so I don't know that I see any security measures in here. Robin, and maybe you could talk about that, about the security that's in here, but I didn't really see, other than they were going to provide some parking lot supervision, or, I mean, what is that going to be?
So the condition number seven, they have to, they have to be responsible for supervision to prevent loitering on the property or in the vicinity of the establishment, and then loitering is defined. And that's essentially because as the weather warms up, that will occur more, and that's a noise concern with people lingering too long into the, in the parking lot. So, yeah, we did not put a condition for security, that's a private, I think that's a private business matter, but we did put the condition in about trying to keep people, once they leave the establishment, to leave the property so that they're not causing more noise in the parking lot.
Okay. My last question, sorry. Then, so we approved the conditional use permit that restricts the activities, it cuts down the hours that they're able to operate, they have to comply with this list of several restrictions, and then if they violate those, then we come back for administrative action on the conditional use permit. And then does that take action on the business altogether, or that's just the restrictions? Like, if Mike, if you understand what I'm trying to get at.
So without a conditional use permit, they would not be able to operate at the business at the location, and then we would, then we'd look at how that impacts their liquor license. But it would, if you revoke their conditional use permit, they would not be able to operate the business as it is. And if there is a concern about security, you could also add a condition in that within 30 days, the applicant would have to provide a detailed security plan to the, acceptable to the Moorhead Police Department.
Thank you. And so, that being said, I'll just ask the council or mayor if we could add that language in with the community engagement.
I think, Mr. Shockley, it'd have to be like somebody who made the motion, who made the motion on that?
Yeah, I'd be in favor of adding that language.
And a second, too, who seconded? Can't remember. Oh, Heather.
I do not like the word acceptable, but I do support the other language. So if supporting or including a detailed security report and submitting it to the Moorhead Police Department?
Is that okay? I'm not sure, so...
I just, from the, my standpoint, if all you're requiring them to do is submit a detailed security plan, they commit, they could submit a security plan that is inadequate. So you want to put something on that condition that it has to be acceptable or adequate or reasonable as determined by the police department.
I just don't know what acceptable is.
I, I just don't know what acceptable is. If, do we have businesses submit security proposals? Is acceptable, like, is there a chart? So I, I'm thinking like a rubric. Is there such a thing? Like, is there a police chart for that? I'm, I'm, I don't want to put a business through any unfair sort of rubric, sort of scenario. Mr. Shockley, that's what I'm thinking.
What I would propose is the language, and I'm drafting on the fly, which is a little dangerous, but they would have to submit a security plan to the police department that details how they will provide security in the establishment to prevent violent acts, underage drinking, and noise complaints.
Wonderful.
That is acceptable. Councilmember Nelson?
I could go, I could go with that.
Thank you. So we have a motion and, amended motion and a second. Is eligible?
Yes. One of the things is this, it's a little getting more puzzling to me. But, as a, that, that facility has been there since, it was, it was originally outside the city limits of Morehead. And now it is incorporated. It's been a, you know, it's, it's been a bar, a tavern for, for years. And, um, and it was, one time it was supposed to be a, a music venue. I think one of the owners there, or whoever leased it or owned it, they were trying to bring in music. As a, as a, as, as a business owner, I know you can control the, the noise as best you can, from leaving the building. You can, in some degrees, you can limit the noise in the parking lot, if you got somebody out there telling people to quiet down. After that, there's, there's, there's really not much you can do. The shooting incident, nobody wants that to happen in any situation. But as a councilman, I was wondering, if a shooting happens outside a bar, any bar, will we do the same to that bar owner? I mean, this is a, you know, we don't know if, this is, this is a one-time occurrence at this place. And it could happen at a bar in the south side of town, in the middle of the town. I don't think there's too many bars in town here. I can only think of three, well, I can only think of two, that if you drew a circle about two blocks away from it, you're going to hit a residential area. You know, I can, I can hear a bar, and they have music outside in my neighborhood. It's a muffled, but it's, I'm a half a mile, at least a half a mile away from that bar. And that bar also now is going to have an apartment very close to it. So I don't know if they're going to change their operations, they're not going to have outside. So I, I think that this establishment is trying to do the best they can. And it's, yes, the, the noise, what I'm hearing is, is being addressed as best you can. The parking, the winter doesn't help you as far as parking goes. And, and of course, you hope that you play, you jam the place every, I mean, there's a lot of people there every night. That means you've got a successful business, but then you've got this parking issue. You don't want to have people going across the street, you know, wherever. And, and, but, so I, I really think that if you, we, we got to think this through. It's like, if this happens, if we do this to this establishment, and something happens to another establishment, there's a shooting, are we going to do the same thing to that, that bar and establishment? Because the owner doesn't have any control over those people that, if they come to his place and then leave and decide they get in an argument and shoot each other, he doesn't have any control over that. Yes, it's, it's, and it's closer to a residential area, but there's, you know, it doesn't matter where it happens. It's not a good place to happen. So, I, I, in one sense, I think we're being a little bit harsh on this business, to be honest with you. I, I, I would just, soon, I'd rather table it and talk about it more, because I just, I, I think they're doing everything they can.
Uh, Councilmember White?
Thanks. Uh, so, kind of similar, I, a little concerned with this, the second, um, suggestion for adding a security plan, although I'm, I feel a little more comfortable after, we talked about it more. When we first talked about having this be something that had to be approved by Morehead Police. For one is, that's adding a whole other layer of responsibility to them, and also, I don't know where that, that new, um, authority would come from, that we're just giving them the authority that, to make that decision. And so, I, I mean, I, I trust our legal counsel, but, but it does, that, you know, uh, would be something distinct, that we would be creating this new responsibility for them. And, um, I do agree that I don't, do we have any other liquor establishments in Morehead that we're currently requiring them to put together, to submit a security plan that, to, that goes to the police? And I, in the end, I think the, the things that we've put together from the Planning Commission would get us to the same place. If there's issues with this, we have the ability to, um, shut them, shut down the establishment. I mean, at this point, if we were to pass the COP, if things did not, if we saw problems in the future, then we have the ability to, to, it sounds like, to remove their liquor license. So obviously, it's in the interest of the business owners to address security issues, because otherwise, they're going to lose their business, you know, whether we require them to put in a plan or not. And so I'm just, I don't know, um, you know, that's, again, a whole other, a, a different level of even adding another level of responsibility for our law enforcement, that I, I don't know if it's necessary, and it doesn't seem to be consistent with the way that we are treating other establishments in the community. So, um, that's, I'm not sure if I, you know, see the need for that second. I, I understand where you're going, and, but I think we're getting in the same place in the end.
My, I can, no, my concern is that they had multiple violations when they first opened. If I was going to open up a business, I'd follow the guidelines to attract new customers and everything else. I would try to follow the letter of the law and just make it a good establishment. They've had multiple violations. That's what bothers me right now. And if, you know, I, I do agree with the, um, motion and the amendment. I, I think those are good ideas, but one question for you, Robin. Would, would we get updates if they did violate, um, any one of these conditions? How would that, how would that be communicated to the council?
So right now, the police department gives me an update every Monday morning, after they've operated over the weekend. That could be, um, you could be updated, through the city manager.
I think that'd be very helpful. So we do have a motion and a second. Did you want to speak, sir?
Yeah, I want to speak. I hope we also take into consideration that, when you come to saying there were violations, I think we met all the requirements. We could open our establishment. When we got, they started the process, documented out, the state asked for, there was nothing there for a security report. The only thing the police department, the agent that did our background check, asked for a detailed business plan, what we should submit to them. So with the other new thing, why we apply to all other bars and restaurants within the Morehead building, we'll come up with full security detail plan for the business, or it would be applied to class A toss. And some of the things that I have concern, I'm a business owner, even within the city. And some of the companies are yelling today, I just say, it was hurting them, I think the state should be given official notice, that they saw what happened, they're not renting us. We'll see some stop invalid news and other media, and then we'll, you know, like, what is going on? Because if we're not getting the information from the state, how are we going to address the issue? If they continue come to, they, they zoning, I think they should give us, that they saw, red alert, say, oh, this, what happened? We don't even know anything, except the news come up and we see it in the news. And that thing they should, it's next, my next concern, that would do the, the business, it's legal. It's not things that would do anything illegal. So with all the other new measures that are coming up, I don't know, but that's my concern, because if they apply to class A toss, will they apply to the next bar, the other bar that comes with, this is a credit plan? Or only class A toss will be allowed to do this?
So we have a motion and an amendment, amended second? Go ahead, Councilmember White.
You have two amendments, or, so we had the original recommendation, and I don't, and then, and then, uh, we, Councilmember Gilbertson and I, uh...
You'd recommend that within 30 days to have a community meeting with the neighbors?
Do we need to vote on that separately, or?
Can we take them together? I'm sorry.
And so are we voting then on now, um, Councilmember Nelson's amendment? And so I just want to make sure if we bring this to, I'm not sure exactly which ones we're voting on.
Well, um, my understanding was that the community meeting was a friendly amendment, and I'm not sure what happened with the second one. I don't think there was a motion to amend the underlying motion for the second condition.
It's, this, so, go ahead. Can we say something?
No, I, whether I was going to ask, so I should make an, a motion to amend the, amended? Okay. So then it will all be voted at, at one time, then? That you're off.
Procedural issue would be, you would vote on a motion, so you'd need a, first, and a, a motion and a second to amend the motion to add in the requirement that they, that the applicant submits a secure, detailed security plan that would address, uh, minor consumption, security at the establishment, um, and any noise complaints. And so you'd need a motion and a second, and you vote on that, and then you would go back to the main motion as amended with the 30, the 30 days to provide the community plan, or meeting.
So we would vote on the, the second amendment, and, so we'd have to have a motion and then a second, and then vote on that?
Correct.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we, and we did have a motion and we have a second. You know what? This is getting complex, so we'll, we'll, we'll take a vote on that and we'll do a roll call vote.
Could, could we have that, the words of that, um, condition? Because condition 20 was essentially have a community meeting within 30 days. That's actually part of the original motion. The second one, condition 21, then, and the language matters here.
Yeah, the, I'll, I'll restate it, if that's okay. It would be a motion to add a condition that the applicant, within 30 days of approval, submits a detailed security plan to the city, uh, that would detail, uh, making sure that minors and consumption, uh, were addressed. The assuring that there'd be no violence, uh, at the, the business, and dealing with noise complaints. That would be submitted within 30 days. To the city, we don't necessarily have to submit it to the police department.
Thank you for the clarification there, Mr. Shockley.
So that would be submitted to, probably planning and zoning, to Planning Director Houston?
Clarification on that? So do, have we ever done, I just want to know, do we have that same sort of stipulation with any other establishment in Morehead?
Don't know for sure. Um, typically with, uh, different businesses, we do require business plans. I think the distinction here is that you have a business that has already had several complaints that's seeking a conditional use permit. So, uh, from my standpoint, you would be justified as the political subdivision asking for that condition, since there's already been noise complaints and other issues at the establishment. And to, to be quite frank, it's not that onerous to develop a security plan for a business like this. It should be something you should have done anyways.
And I do appreciate that this would go to planning and not to Morehead PD, so not another, not another thing on their plate.
Okay, um, let's, let's take a roll call vote on the second amendment.
So this would be within 30 days?
Right. So, Mr. Shockley, you said 30 days, correct? Yep.
Okay. Sorry, I just wanted to get this clear. So, um, this one is, so I've got a motion?
By Councilmember Nelson and second by?
By Nelson, second by Gilbertson. And this is to approve this with the addition of a detailed security plan submitted within 30 days.
Just the amendment?
Just the amendment.
Are we good?
Okay.
Okay.
To approve the addition of a detailed security plan submitted within 30 days to the planning department, detailing securities that John outlined. Ryan Nelson?
Aye.
Gilbertson?
Aye.
Niesemeyer?
No.
Karun?
Yes.
White?
No.
Lindas?
No.
Seljivold?
No.
Hendrickson?
Yes.
So what was the vote on that?
Four, four.
Did you break the Thailand protest?
No, I don't think the mayor protest votes.
The motion would fail then, because it's a tie.
Okay, that motion?
Go back to the original motion as amended.
So we'll go back to the original motion that was amended with, with the community meeting, within 30 days. Any questions on that? Councilmember Seljivold?
A yes or no vote on this conditional use, or if you vote no, do they continue to operate? Or is this, uh, shutting them down, or what?
Uh, if you vote no on the conditional use permit, then we're, tomorrow, we would have a meeting with, uh, the clerk's office to figure out next steps on the liquor license. But they would continue operating until we take action on, if that's deemed appropriate, on the liquor license.
So they?
Your mayor, Mr. Protest Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Wanted to note also, conditional use permits, if you do recommend denial, you have to state on the record exactly why you're denying it, so I just wanted to make you aware of that.
Thank you.
And it has to be based upon?
There has to be a nexus to your, why you're denying it. So, um, you know, in this case, for example, you could base it on the already, the noise complaints that have already occurred. I just want to, just, um, I don't know, maybe the city attorney can explain it. Conditional uses, conditional use permits, they're required, but conditional uses are permitted uses with conditions. So I'm not sure if any of the council members have been on the council long enough for when we've denied conditional use permits. That's why I'm saying, like, the city attorney would need to advise exactly how to deny it, um, to protect yourself from legal jeopardy.
I like how you looked at me, but I haven't, never denied, I don't think we've ever denied it when I've been on council, so. Yeah. 10 years, at least.
The last one was a cell phone tower.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I was on council for that. Apologize.
That actually came back and was reversed.
Right. I remember that. Councilmember Karun?
Thank you, Mayor Protest. Uh, I'm wondering if we need to table this? And to give us a little bit more time to make sure that we all are understanding, um, what this will mean and, uh, get on the same page.
You making a motion?
So I make a motion to table this.
We have a motion to table. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
So we're done? Or do we have to vote on it?
You have to vote on it. Motions to table are non-debatable. Call the question.
Okay.
Do we need a time limit for the tabling?
If you don't put a time limit on it, it'll come back at next meeting, which I would recommend anyways, because you have until April 13th to, uh, take action. Otherwise, if you fail to take action, it's deemed approved under Minnesota law.
Thank you, Mr. Shockley, and thank God you're here, by the way. So we have a motion for a table and a second, and I'll take a roll call vote on this, too.
Motion by Karun, second by?
Seljivold.
Thank you. White?
Yes.
Lindas?
Yes.
Seljivold?
Yes.
Hendrickson?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Gilbertson?
Gilbertson?
No.
Niesemeyer?
No.
Yet Karun?
Karun, yes.
So, and thanks for your patience. The motion is tabled. We'll look forward to seeing it in the next council meeting. Thank you all for a spirited and good debate. And thank you, Robin. Appreciate it. And thank you, sir, for being here. Thank you. All right, that moves this to 12E, first reading of ordinance for the 20, 2304, an ordinance to amend the section 6-2B, control of invasive species, tree pests. And I think, is that you, Mike, or is it? Go ahead. Or Trent?
Go ahead and speak on this one. The, the, this is a first reading of, of an ordinance that, really with, with us finding the Emerald Ash Bore in the community. What, what this does is it, it takes our existing Dutch Elm ordinance and changes the wording to really allow us to use it to address all invasive species with, as it relates to trees. So, that is essentially what, what this ordinance change does.
Okay, so we have the first reading. Does anybody have any questions regarding this? And Trent, you know, and Trent's in, in the audience, too, if you'd like to ask him questions.
Sure he'd be happy to share his wisdom on this topic, yes.
And people are worried about it. I've been hearing concerned citizens about Emerald Ash Bore. Didn't think it was going to get here, but it hit St. Cloud, and now it's, it's here. Anybody have any, oh, Mr. Lindas.
We knew it was coming, and that's why, I believe, kudos to our forestry department and Public Works for actually taking the action that they have beforehand. But could you speak to the public-private kind of issue? You know, we're, you know, there's obviously ash trees that aren't just in the public right of way. You know, what are the plans, or what is assistance that, that we can give to homeowners?
Well, currently, I guess the assistance would just be educating them the best we can, giving them all the different options. And then, as far as assistance financially, what we're looking at doing is similar, or it's the same as what we do with Dutch Elm disease. So, if a resident has a tree that is infested on their premises, they can have it assessed to their property, and then spread it out over a five-year period, I believe, current protocol.
But if a resident wants to treat their tree on themselves, will you have kind of a list of approved vendors, or?
Yep. So, we've actually worked on that. And currently, on the forestry website, there is a list of contractors that are certified with the city. And we did just include a little symbol next to contractors that are providing those services, or willing to provide those services.
A little Emerald Ash Bore.
It's a, it's a T for treatment.
Yeah, so I, I think that's great. And then there's kind of best practices. I mean, the city has basically said, if it's a small tree, easy to take out, we don't, we're not going to treat that, we're going to replace it.
Right, yep, it's, it's more financially responsible to remove those small trees.
Right.
Currently have 6,800 ash trees in our, our public inventory. We don't have the capacity to treat all those trees. And it's not actually cost-effective to treat the trees that are 10 inches and smaller.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I have a, I have a question, too. They haven't found any to our city to the west.
Uh, they haven't. They haven't yet. But it isn't Winnipeg. I don't know if you guys are aware of that. So, it can survive cold climates.
Okay. If not, I'm asking for...
Happy to make the motion.
Okay.
Second, Niesemeyer.
Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those pose same sign? That brings us to item 12F, resolution to approve a budget adjustment, 23013, to cover costs of treatment and containing the spread of Emerald Ash Bore.
Motion to approve, Niesemeyer?
White seconds.
Motion and a second. Any questions? Councilmember Gilbertson.
Thanks, Mayor Protest. There's two costs in there for building, for 50 grand each. What's, what are, what are those for?
Yeah, so, one of them is for assistance with Dutch Elm disease removal. And this would be to, if we need to treat all these trees, worst-case scenario is we may need more assistance with removing elm trees that have Dutch Elm disease to keep up with this service. And then the other one is for pruning in the winter. And that is because during an infestation, best management practices are to remove trees from October 1st to the end of April. So, in the summer, that is when the beetle can get out and then spread. So, you don't want to be removing trees at that time, and then hauling them to the compost site, to dispose of them, and having a beetle potentially get out. So, a lot of the removals that we will need to do will actually take place during the winter months, which will impact our pruning services, pruning that we typically do. So, 50,000 is for, for elm removals, for Dutch Elm disease, and 50,000 would be for pruning.
And, and this is, excuse me, but just to give a little bit more background, this is essentially to give us some, some funds to draw on if we have to sort of backfill our, our activities with contractors. Is that...
That's correct, yes, yep.
So, it isn't, it isn't something we're necessarily going to spend, but it's, it's a dollar figure we've identified to, to basically keep up with our work as we address Emerald Ash Bore.
Any other questions? If not, I'm looking for a motion to approve the resolution, approve the budget adjustment.
You already have one.
You already have one.
Do we already have it?
Yep.
It's been a long day. I apologize. So, all those in favor say aye.
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 All those pose same sign? And that resolution passes. Like, again, it's said it's been a long day, so I apologize.
We're so close.
Yeah. Brings us down to 14 mayor and council reports. Councilmember Niesemeyer.
Thank you, Mayor Protest. I have the wonderful pleasure of serving on the Clay County Collaborative. And we are currently in the process of hiring our coordinator. And so, if anybody is interested in knowing more about the Clay County Collaborative, they're a group that brings community partners together to address challenges of children, birth to 21. And they work with a variety of families and children's and programs throughout the county of Clay. And we're looking for a coordinator. It's a part-time work, very skilled, lots of budgets, and wonderful people throughout the county. So, check out the position. It's posted, claycountycollaborative, all one word, dot org. Or you can find the job posting on Facebook. And so, it's really a great opportunity to work with great individuals. And so, I just wanted to share that wonderful news.
Very much. Councilmember Karun.
Thank you, Mayor Protest. We, a few of us had the opportunity to visit St. Paul this past week. I don't know if I'm stealing your thunder.
No, go ahead.
Okay. So, some of the folks from our team, Mayor Shelley Carlson and our director Lisa Bodie, Councilmember Hendrickson, Councilmember Lindas, and I were able to join in the, at the Capitol for LMC's City Day on the Hill last week, learning about some, some different issues that are relevant at the state level, but then also having conversations about what's happening in Moorhead with our deed commissioner Kevin McKinnon, our Minnesota House of Transportation Finance and Policy Representative Hornstein, Representative Joy, and Senator Kupick. So, we really appreciated them taking the time with our team to learn about our Moorhead flood mitigation and underpass projects. So, a really great, great visit, despite some difficult weather.
It was a very productive couple of days there, so my thanks to both of you. And thanks for, I was going to ask you to report on that, so thank you. Appreciate that. Councilmember Lindas.
I'm, I'm just going to segue off of that, because I also had an opportunity at the same time to meet with Representative Heather Keeler, who was, I'm going to give a shout out, because she is extremely productive in passing a whole bunch of legislation. So, she was running between and talking to a whole bunch of other representatives and senators. And she fit me into a, a tight schedule. And so, I really appreciated that conversation, but she's also aware, and so she, she was, took the time to understand the concerns and what we need in our community. And so, again, it was a really productive time. I, I am going to say that, that the problem was that Moorhead didn't advance the state, okay? And that's because Chuck wasn't actually rooting for them.
I, I stand to correct you, Councilmember Lindas, I was cheering for Moorhead. There's a special place in my heart for Warroad. And that was broken Saturday night, so thank you. Any other? Oh, Councilmember White.
Thank you. I wanted, just wanted to mention two things. I had the opportunity to attend the International Women's Day Celebration hosted by Condell Kell last week. Was a great opportunity to be in community with other wonderful women leaders throughout our region. And I also had the opportunity to attend, on behalf of the mayor, the National Association of Women in Construction event for their Women in Construction Week. And I was able to read our proclamation from the city. And I'm also proud to say, I was, I went into this fully aware that they, that they pit city against city in a hammer-slogging competition. And so, I went up against Commissioner Denise Kolpak, and I am proud to tell my colleagues that the trophy, the hammer-slogging trophy is coming back to Moorhead. So, I was able to represent us. And, and I say that with all humor, because, it was only because I was the one that was slightly less horrible at hammer-slogging. So, certainly need to stick to my day job. Thank you.
You're going to have to elaborate on hammer-slogging, or in public, yeah.
So, you, you put the nail in. And it's, so it's a competition to see who can hammer in a nail as quickly as possible. And actually, I've done it before, but, but these folks are hardcore. And so, they actually don't use the flat part of the hammer, they use the little wedge part of the hammer. And so, that's why I impart, I wasn't prepared for that part of it, and that's why I was so terrible. But, so, yeah, I made very little progress. Luckily, they were, they have a big hammer-slogging competition with brackets and everything. And they were kind to us, and they just had us do three hammer swings each, rather than the, you know, painfully sitting and watching us all try to, you know, watching Commissioner Kolpak and I try to get that nail in, so, but I, I still won.
Very good. Very good. Thank you so much. And Councilmember Niesemeyer.
I, I forgot two things. One, it was the first City of Moorhead Citizens Government Academy last week. It's a six-week shindig that's being put together. 24 of us get to hang out and learn all about the inner workings about the City of Moorhead. Last week was the first week, and it was absolutely outstanding. I highly recommend people sign up. There's a list. Also, the police academy have a shindig in the fall. And so, if you're interested, that's a 10-week, so look for that. But, the second thing, which Councilmember White didn't mention, is that she won an award on International Women's Day for all of the networking and group gathering of women that she has done through new leadership, and her decades and decades of building opportunities for women to connect and just build a community together that has, like I said, gone on for decades. And so, there were wonderful groups of women sharing wonderful stories. And so, Councilmember White failed to mention that when she mentioned that this evening. So, I want to make sure that it is known that she won an award that evening.
Congratulations, Councilmember White. Anyone else? Councilmember Lindas?
So, I just want to give a shout out. We got a lot of snow. And I really appreciate the residents who are clearing and freeing up their fire hydrants. And you can, you can actually get kudos on the city if you want to adopt that fire hydrant, put a little hat on it, call it a name. But, yeah, if you, if you don't, or if you haven't had the opportunity to, to get to know your fire hydrant, please do, and, and shovel it so that if, if it's needed, it's accessible, because there's an awful lot of snow out there.
Thank you. Councilmember Lindas, I have a couple of things here. First of all, I want to give a shout out to our Public Works Department. They've been very busy the last week. And it looks like we have some more snow in the forecast. So, thank you, thank you all for working so hard. It's, our streets are cleared the same day, so it was nice. I just wish it would melt, but, can't ask for everything, I guess. I, I attended a retaining students in the local workforce with Assistant Manager Eats, and it was a panel moderated by Mayor Tim Mahoney, just on what we can do to keep the students in the Fargo-Moorhead area for work retention and that. And really a good discussion. I also attended the Fargo-Moorhead Convention and Visitors Bureau annual meeting and awards presentation. And it's always good to network there and meet different people, different businesses. So, that was a really good event. And like Councilmember Karun said, we did go to St. Paul and met with our legislators. And it was, like I said, it was a very good session, so, and Moorhead's, Moorhead's doing well, so... With that, city manager reports, or assistant city manager reports?
Nothing to report tonight.
And there's no executive session? Okay. Any new business? Thank you. With that, meeting is adjourned. Have a good night, Moorhead. Thank you.